Do you want to call this meeting to order? I'm going to ask Mr. President if she would do a roll call, please.
Carrie Germaine.
Present.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Present.
Autumn Henry.
Here.
Chuck Melkey.
Here.
Andrea Fick.
Here.
Kim Winter.
Here.
Holly Jarvis.
Here.
Thank you, everybody's present. Happy New Year, everybody. Hope you had a good holiday break and were able to find some time to rest and relax. I'm going to ask everyone to join us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. All right, we have at the beginning of the meeting an opportunity for a public comment specific to the items on our agenda. If anybody has any items specific to our agenda they'd like to comment upon, please come to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Nobody? All right, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. All right, next, we have our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Andrea? Do we have support?
Support.
Kim? Any comments or questions? Okay, we have financial information on this consent agenda, so I'm going to ask Sue if she would do a roll call, please.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, Sue. All right, this is our organizational meeting, and I want to welcome our new board members, Autumn Henry and Alyssa Bouchard. And so for this part of the agenda, we will do selection of board officers, beginning with president, then vice president, treasurer, then secretary. I will open the floor for nominations, and we'll go one by one. I'll ask Sue at that point for each one to do roll call. If you have any questions, please let me know about the process.
Shall we start with the president?
I will open the floor for nominations for president.
I would like to nominate Carrie Germaine to stay president.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Support.
Kim or Holly? Kim? All right, any comments or questions?
Can we nominate someone else?
Yes.
Okay, could I nominate Kim Winters?
You may. Any support?
Support.
Okay, Chuck? All right, beginning with myself. Sue, can you do roll call, please? So I should mention, the procedure is such that if multiple people are nominated, then we will go through each person with the person with the most votes or the majority getting that position. So Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Andrea Fick?
Just while I'm going to say who I want?
No, well, I'm just doing mine first because you nominated me first.
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
No.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Six yes.
Six yes. So that is a majority, and we don't have to go to the other one. Okay? All right, next, on the agenda, we have vice president. I would open up the floor for nominations.
I would like to nominate Chuck. Support.
Okay, so let's see, we have Holly and Andrea nominating Chuck for vice president. Sue, can you, are there any nominations for vice president other than Chuck? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Chuck, I should have asked you if you were open to the nomination of being vice president.
Yeah, I didn't ask, but, um, that's okay. Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody for the support for me as well. Moving on, we have treasurer. I would open up the floor for nominations for treasurer.
I would like to nominate Alyssa Bouchard.
Support?
Support.
Kim, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. And the last office we have is for secretary. I would open up the floor for nominations for secretary.
I would like to nominate Andrew.
Support.
Chuck, support? Any other nominations? All right, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Seven yeses, thank you. All right, appreciate all of that. That was very smooth. All right, moving on, we have our superintendent report. Rod, I'm sure you have all kinds of things that are coming up in the new year.
I do. I told Sue this afternoon I got to stop writing things down. We made it past two pages. First, I just want to welcome all the new board members, Alyssa and Autumn, as well as everyone in there if they're in a new position or they're, retain their position. We are excited for a new year and talk a little bit more about some of the things that we got in line for the board. But before we do that, I'd like to take just a moment to do a moment of silence. We lost an active employee, employee right before break, during break, Mr. Richard Bazell, who was with the district for 36 years in the Schwartz Creek Maintenance Department, and he passed away. So if we could take a moment for Richard. So this is our organizational meeting. Sue and I are getting together to get a survey out after the meeting is done, and we know who wants to chair the committees and what days and times they think will work best, and then we'll send out a survey for our one-on-one meetings so that we can get everyone on a scheduled day that can repeat monthly on that day and time. That way, we can have it loaded into the calendar for the whole year. So we'll do that after today's meeting is done, and we can kind of look at where all of our meetings and subcommittee meetings fall in times. February 13th is our first board workshop of the year. We're going to have Penny Kentish back out. She was out a couple of years ago to talk about governance from M A S B, and so Sue sent out an invite, I think it is dinner starting at 4:30. Penny will start her session about 5:00. They always say two hours, but I think sometimes, depending on how fast she goes through the material, it can be as quick as 90 minutes, but I've also seen them go two and a half. So I would expect anywhere between 90 minutes and two and a half hours, just depending on how the material goes. We got a letter from one of our congressmen, Senator John Cherry. I just want to read it real quick. Dear Mr. Heatherton, I would like to congratulate Schwartz Creek Community Schools on receiving the My Heart Safe School Designation. This recognition shines a light on the importance of schools across Michigan being ready to handle cardiac emergencies. By earning the My Heart Safe School Designation, Schwartz Creek Community Schools has shown a real dedication to creating and maintaining a safe space where the well-being of our kids always comes first. Again, congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Should you require any assistance in the future, please feel free to reach out to my office. Sincerely, John Cherry, State Senator, Michigan 27th District. So that is actually a middle school honor, although it names the whole school district, and we're going to work on some of our other schools. But I just wanted to give a big shout-out to our district-wide nurse, Alicia Gardner. Some of the things that you have to have in place to be a My Heart Safe School is a written cardiac emergency plan, an emergency plan that has CPR and AED certification sufficient to school hours and hours where there are activities and sports as well. At least 10% of the staff, 50% of the coaches, 100% of the head coaches, 100% of P E with current CPR, AED, completed coursework, a sufficient number of accessible properly-maintained AEDs, sufficient estimated by time to the scene and recognition of an AED within two to five minutes of incident, the performance of at least one cardiac emergency response drill per year, and all athletic participation screening completed with the Michigan High School Athletic Association where they screen our athletes for heart conditions. So a big thank you to Alicia. It's the first time we've ever received the honor, so pretty excited about that, and can't wait to see how Ms. Gardner expands to the other schools as well as some of the other trainings she's been implementing across the district. We have our winter M A S B institute coming up. Test these out. That is going to be February 7th and 8th. You can get on, you can take the starter classes, you can take other classes if you've already completed some. Big shout-out to Alyssa, who has already completed CBA 101. So if you have any questions, Sue communicates with them, does all the scheduling, tracks the courses. If you want to get signed up, she can walk you through all of that. Sophia also did a fantastic job. We had our student roundtable right before break, and I think it was our fifth year, and Sophia changed up the entire format. So I don't know what kind of courage you got to have as a senior to come and say, "I'm going to do the board roundtable a little different," but she did, and I, actually, I think it went awesome. The interaction was much more in-depth than what we've had in the past. Not that any of them were bad, but I just felt like the questions were really discussed in more detail. And then not only that, but she then took and summarized every single question. So there's, I think we hit six topics, and they were all charted out, and then she put that into a document. So I think it's going out to the high school. I will put it in the next memo so that you can read through it. It was like four pages long, telling everybody about topics, everything from facilities to teacher relationships, safety, things like that. So it was well-received. Thank you, Sophia. And I don't think I put anything on here that could possibly be on your report tonight, so. And then lastly, just, there's a lot going on with legislation, so I want to give a quick update. All right, I'm going to walk through this. So before the break, well, a couple of weeks before the break, both the House and the Senate were working on some things. Then the week before, they didn't have enough participation in the House to get things done, but if they had passed and voted on it prior to, they could move it forward. So some things have made it to the governor's desk, and a lot of things did not make it because if it wasn't introduced and voted on in prior weeks, there was no way to get it to the desk. So one of those changes is House Bill 6058. This would replace P A 152, and that is all about the cap and share of insurance costs. So right now, districts can choose an 80/20, meaning the employee pays 20% and the district pays 80%. Or we can go with the cap. We have always been with the cap. The cap normally is supposed to increase about 3% per year. This last year, it was like .01 or something to that effect. So there have been some issues with insurance rates, which continue to climb. So this bill would change it so that everyone is on the 80/20, and then it would mandate a 3% change to that each year. It was not put into immediate effect, so if the governor does sign it, it wouldn't go into effect until around April 1st, and then it all depends on what your current contracts say. So if the contract mentions P A 152, but doesn't mention, you know, the changes or doesn't mention 152, you might not have to make changes. If it specifically calls out the highest available number during 152, then if this was signed and went into effect in April, we would then have to start paying a higher share as a district. The amounts that they're talking about are now 8,258 to pay by the district for a single, 17,271 for a two-person, and $22,523 for every employee that does full family. Because this would be a change mid-budget, there's a lot of lobbying from the education groups that they put together a supplemental package because nobody knows how you could make this type of a change mid-year and then expect us to be able to cover it. So there was a talk at one point about a $200 million supplemental package for the state that could possibly also go to the governor's desk that would offset whatever the new costs to the district are. So more on that, we'll see if the governor signs it. Originally, she said if a package didn't come to her about the roads and some of the projects she was working on, she wasn't going to sign anything in lame duck, so we don't know what's going to happen. I will keep you updated. House Bill 6060 on the next page is one that impacts the pension plan. So this would put a sunset on automatic plan closure. It would lock in a person's retirement rate immediately. Currently, O R S can change that retirement age as late as five years before retirement. So that would lock it in much sooner. It would eliminate any 50/50 debt sharing if the pension system ever goes back to not fully funded. Right now, they're considering it fully funded, which is why we're getting that 3% back. And it would allow employees in the defined contribution system a one-time chance to change over to the defined benefit. So I think it was 2012 where they started tweaking, and they were kind of hybrids, and then they got more and more into heavy on the undefined part of it towards the end. So there's not a lot of people that have, that are coming on now that have a high stake in the defined part of the pension, but this bill would allow them to enter back into it. And then, Jim, I think we also said, this isn't in my notes, but they were considering also allowing people to buy five years again. So originally, employees could always buy five years of their retirement, and then, again, 10-ish years ago, they removed that, and I think that also is going in to the bill that employees could go back to buying five years of service, but we don't know what that looks like yet. Curriculum bills, there is a bill out there, House Bill 5174 on organ donation, so things like your tissue and eyes and whatnot, and just having informational programs available to public schools starting in the '25, '26 school year. This is being referred to a second, or was referred to a second reading on December 3rd before break. The other curriculum bill, House Bill 5735, is to remove references to specific courses, so things like Algebra I or Geometry or whatnot from the actual revised school code, so not from our course catalog or anything, but from the revised school code, because the way that's written now, a student passes Algebra when they meet X number of standards, not when they pass the class. You could hit all the standards, not pass the class, and vice versa. That doesn't matter. In order to get the Algebra I credit, as it was called previously, you have to hit these standards. So now they want to take those labels out and talk about the standards and mixing some of those standards within classes, which we've already been working on at multiple levels. This passed the House in December, and that's as far as it has gone. The transportation bill did pass, House Bill 4928, 4929, and 4930. It is now assigned as P A 161, and that increases fines for people who are failing to stop at a bus that has a camera-based or arm violation detector. So if someone goes past the flashing lights, the stop sign, you've got a camera. The fine moves from 100 to 250, not to exceed 500. That is now state law. Firearms safety on the governor's desk is House Bill 5450, which would require the Department of Health and Human Services to create and provide the M D E information containing the best practices for storing firearms. And then similarly, House Bill 5451 also on the governor's desk would then mandate that we then distribute this information to parents either by mail or electronically. So basically, the Department of Health has to meet with M D E. They have to decide what those practices are. We then, as a district, have to disseminate those best practices to the public. It is not signed, but it is on the governor's desk. School safety packages, House Bill 4095, does a standard response and terminology. We have been at the forefront of this all along. We've already changed our ALICE drills and updated, but just so you now know, the levels are locked down. Secure mold, shelter in place, reverse evacuation, and room clear. House Bill 4096 creates standardized response for Michigan State Police. Michigan State Police currently don't have standard vocabulary, and this would force them to also have standard vocabulary. House Bill 5549 requires professionals to establish threat assessment teams, school administrator, mental health professional, and school resource officer. We already do this as well. Every one of our principals has been trained in a C-STACK, that is the Countywide Adopted Threat Assessment Protocol. There's a rubric that goes with it, and we have ancillary staff trained as well, just as this would require mental health professionals. We have done a lot of our social workers and whatnot. We've done our assistant principals, sometimes our counselors, teacher consultants, instructional coaches. It helps if it's someone who doesn't have a classroom, because you need to have two people run through the assessment in order for it to be valid. And so that's why we have a lot of non-load-bearing people who have been trained on top of the principal. You can have more that sit on it. You can have more that sit on your team, which we do, but you need two to run the actual assessment. House Bill 5659 revises the membership of the school safety commission in which the governor would then appoint 12 members. And House Bill 5660 updates the school safety commission to be referred to, so this is just a renaming, to be referred to as the School Safety and Mental Health Commission beginning January 1. So that's on the governor's desk. It's January 8th. Again, we'll see if she signs that. If she does sign it, that would be the name of the new commission, the School Safety and Mental Health Commission. Three more. House Bill 4854 would require and allow indigenous students to wear traditional regalia at graduation ceremonies. So if an indigenous student has a particular dress that is traditional to their background, this bill would allow them and mandate that we allow them to wear that in those ceremonies. House Bill 5269 mandates that P S, oh, so the next two, I'll just go with these real quick. They don't impact us at all. These are for charter schools. So charter schools have long had way less transparency than us. I mean, if you've ever gone to our transparency page, you see all of the details, and then if you go to the Michigan school data, you see all of the test scores. There's not a lot that we don't have on there. But this now forces P S As, so public school academies, which have been 30 years behind us in transparency, to actually have some of those things. So they would also have to have some specific things on their website, not as many as we do, but more specific things like salary information, and it would also require that their authorizing body, so a charter school is authorized by someone. It could be a university, it could be a company, like sometimes CMU authorizes charter schools, sometimes a private company authorizes. But all material for signage, advertising, and promotional materials would have to have that authorizing body's name on the material, so you couldn't just pass out material without knowing who's sponsoring that charter school. That doesn't really impact us, but those are the last two. And that is all I have.
I have a question.
Me too.
I'm just, on HB 5174, I'm, not that that's necessarily a bad thing, but it makes it sound like this is, it says they have to, we would have to ensure that they complete it before their ninth grade year. So is this going to be a required thing, or can students choose to go to it?
The way I, you said 5174?
Yeah.
The way I read it is that if this is passed, so this one's just in a second reading right now, but if this is passed and signed, it would become mandated curriculum. So yes, it would be mandated.
Like just become part of the health class?
Most likely, that's where that would fit, is in health.
Do you think they'd make parents sign off? I don't like they do sex ed.
I don't think.
I mean, I don't think it's that extreme by any means. You're just telling kids like, hey.
I don't think for organ donation, you would have a mandatory sign off, but, you know, we have, you can sign off on anything.
I mean, I think it's great, actually, because how many people don't know, like, you don't know what you don't know, right? I don't know that I've ever had the conversation with my kid about being an organ donor and a driver's license. Never had that conversation, but I am one. I don't think I've ever had it with my kids, so I think it's a great thing.
My, my question is regarding the bus fines. So if I'm reading it correctly, this would be like state enforcement ticket type of ordeal, but the fine comes back to us, the whole fine? Am I reading that correctly? The civil fine for camera-based violation would be distributed to the school district that operates the school bus?
That's the way it reads, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Catch those people. You know, I really would prefer we're not running lights, but.
At least it's not, at least we can get it back for the school bus.
Right.
Any other questions for Rod? Rod, I appreciate you bringing this legislative update to us like you do throughout the year and being so actively involved with the superintendents group legislatively, and I think it's really helpful. I've heard that Lansing is headed for a very busy year, so we'll see what happens, but thank you for keeping us updated. thank you for keeping us updated. Okay. Now, let us move on to Ms. Sophia for our student board representative report.
Hello, everybody, and welcome back from the holidays. I hope everyone had a great holiday, and welcome to our two new board members. Welcome to your guys' positions. I'm so excited to get to know you guys. First off, our district celebrated our break in holidays with an early snow day, which was very much either needed or not. It was enjoyable for everybody, and we started back up school this Monday. A lot of this is, it's a lot smaller today, because we did have two weeks off between the last time that we talked, but before our break, our high school hosted our annual student roundtable. We discussed many pressing issues and exciting things that would happen within our schools, and it's, it's great to create a space where students can feel as though they can advocate for themselves or for others, or even just express their opinions on things, and I think that our board loves to get involved with that. So, yes, it was wonderful, great turnout. Our high school drama club attended the Despian Festival before break in Lansing. We got to have 15 of our high schoolers' students showcase their love for theater, whether it was by learning how to do the technical side of things, being able to perform, or just being able to workshop some of those skills that we don't quite get to assess within our own program. Mr. Luke and his talented chorus in some of the community were able to go caroling within the village, which was a great way to live in the holiday spirit before we went off for break. And coming up within our community, our Schwartz Creek PAC and Performing Arts are doing a riveting, and I hear it's such a great production, they're doing The Outsiders, which is going to be the 17th through the 19th in our PAC. Tickets for that is going to be $15 for the community, and then students and senior citizens, it'll be $10. So make sure to go get tickets for that online. And lastly, our high schoolers are trying to lock in academically, because we have exams starting the 22nd, so make sure that you're getting prepared for those, and your students are getting prepared for those. And yes, I hope everyone had a wonderful break. I'm so happy to be back with you guys, and that is all I have for you guys today.
Thank you, Sophia. Any questions for Sophia?
Not a question, just a comment. I really enjoyed the roundtable, it's only my second time doing it, but I, compared to last time we rotated, I think we rotated as adults to different students, I kind of liked being with the same group for different questions, instead of the same question over and over, it gave me more exposure to more answers, where last time, right, we did the same topic, but with different students. So I liked that, and it kind of gave me a little more feel with my group, right? It helped me lead the group a little bit better, the longer I sat with them. It helped us kind of work off each other a little bit. So I liked it like that, and I liked how you did the recap, and it got everyone to write something down, where I don't think the students wrote things down the last time we did it. And this time, they were kind of, even though it was just one person at the table, a couple at our table were taking notes, at least writing things down and putting them in the post-it notes, and we all know writing things down makes it sick in your brain better. So I liked it. Thank you very much for putting the time and effort into doing that, Sophia.
Thank you.
I wanted to also say, I liked being with the same group, too, because I felt like after a little while, they warmed up to you and were more willing to talk than to keep rotating, so I thought that was good, too.
I would echo that, Sophia. Quality over quantity, although I love meeting more students. I felt like I knew the students when we left, but I'm also looking forward to the summary of some of the feedback that you got for each of your topics, because they were very good and very thoughtful topics, and the conversations were very rich that we had at our table. I'm sure you saw the same thing, and the students seemed to enjoy it as well, even if they hadn't been there previously. So, thank you for investing the time in that, and we look forward to the next one. Wink, wink.
Thank you, guys.
It's wink time. All right, anything else for Sophia? Thanks, as always, Missy. You are a great representative of our student body, and we appreciate you. All right, going forward on informational items, you do have some employment of non-certified staff in your packet, and then let's go forward with the board discussion items, which is school board discussion and chairperson selection. We have several board subcommittees that we chair. I'm going to turn it over to Rod, he may have a process he already has in mind, but just keep that in mind as we have this conversation.
Yeah, so right now, we have academic achievement and policy, which are hooked through a common agenda. If you recall, we hooked those together, so that if we ended early or went over, we wouldn't have to wait or have someone waiting, and they could be a little more fluid. And that was happening on Tuesday afternoon. And then we had our finance and operations, same thing, finance would go first on the Monday before a board meeting, with a fluid schedule leading right into operations. So I think just this conversation can be about if you want to keep the group you have, if you want to take on a certain group. I know that we've said this multiple times, but if we could stay in the 8 to 4, that'd be great, just because we bring so many principals and instructional coaches. It doesn't have to be. In fact, if you chair it and you can't do that time, well, obviously, we'll create a different timeframe. We used to, back in the day, before the last three or four years, we used to do AA and policy in the morning at 8 o'clock, and it worked out fantastic, because we could pull the principals right over, especially if they were secondary, bring them in, get them out, and that worked really well. And they don't have to be Monday and Tuesday as well, if there's someone out there that has a Thursday that works, we could do Thursday before a board meeting. And we could even do a Friday, if you wanted to do it in the morning. So, I know nobody wants to do a Friday afternoon, but it's really up in the air, as far as how we could do it. In the past, Sue put together a couple of calendars, but we didn't, we knew that we lost two people, so it was kind of hard to even know what your schedule is available. So we didn't put the calendars. I think once we get done with the discussion on who's interested, we could then go into what's your availability, and then we'll just get Sue to create a calendar on that.
Okay. I will begin by saying I would like to remain chair of academic achievement, unless there's someone else who would like to do it. I would still attend those meetings. Anyone else?
I mean, I would not, I don't want that one, but I'd be willing to take over policy, because I know we have an opening there, if nobody else wants policy. And Alyssa, you don't really have a choice, do you?
So as chair of finance and your treasurer, newly-appointed treasurer, is that what I'm hearing?
Is that, I mean, the norm I would propose, right? If you're the treasurer, you manage that meeting?
And then Chuck? I don't want to ever assume, but I've heard you say you'd like to-
I'll stay on building and co-chair treasurer, if I give the former trustee, yes, I agree.
Okay. So I have academic achievement, myself, policy, Andrea, finance, Alyssa, operations/building and site. Chuck? Anyone else?
Could it be co-chair? It could be Melissa, Alyssa.
And that puts you and I co-opening each other, which I'm fine with, too.
Just a reminder, these are all committee of the whole, so anybody can attend, you could all attend all meetings, right?
Right, right.
So if all seven of us show up, we're fine.
It's posted, the agenda's posted, the times are posted, the calendar's posted, so because we run them as committee of the whole, everyone can attend every meeting that's available. So I guess Alyssa and Chuck, can we start with you guys? It has previously been 2 o'clock and then 3 o'clock in through 4 o'clock on a Monday before a board meeting. Do Mondays still work for you guys? Does the afternoon still work? How do you want to handle that?
I mean, I don't have money to do it, but I'm not fixing any location, but we can do Monday if you guys want to do Tuesday.
Having them all available during that time on Monday for that-
Tuesday.
Just, actually, on Monday, right?
They just swapped.
They just swapped again? Okay.
Right? Is that what I heard? Tuesday?
Okay. So that would work? Okay? And you'll have your staff available without any issues?
What time then works on Mondays? You guys do morning? No? Can you do 2 to 4?
Yeah.
You're not, you're not up and roaring?
I am, that's the problem.
2 to 4?
I actually prefer Monday, but I'll do it.
Well, we could do Thursdays the week before.
So we have Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday? Can you do it, so that we're done by Friday?
I mean, I could do Thursday, I mean, Monday morning's just kind of be busy for me, so.
Sure. Yeah. What, what's-
Well, I do, every once a month, I have Thursday morning meetings, so it's usually the second Thursday.
This would normally be the third Thursday? And do you want to swap them, so that academic goes first instead?
It doesn't matter, I mean-
Or that's the way we do it now?
Eight, 10, 3rd Thursday, or Thursday before a board meeting, 2 to 4 for finance and operations, Tuesday before a board meeting. Thursday before, so Thursday-
So it'd be a full week before.
What about like June, I mean, it's good, we have both second ones?
It's always before the second one.
So policy, we need to-
9 to 10. Yeah, you come a lot, Jim, does that still work?
Yeah, I think that still works. I mean, I know-
I mean, I know Alyssa knows how this works, but, and you said meeting of the whole, but, you know, just knowing.
So for the new board members- As Rod mentioned, this is a meeting of the whole, so all board members are able to attend any of the subcommittees. They're fully posted in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and so you can attend one or two months, not another, or you can come each time, or you can go from one to the other to the other, if you'd like, or you can go to all, like I tend to do. It's actually a good way, a lot of the work is done there, a lot of the conversations are done there, a lot of the presentations are done there, so it's a really good way to actually come up to speed on what's going on. I think the folks that have experienced that would agree. So, if anybody has any questions on that. So are we good? We have Monday, Thursday, 8 to 10, 3rd Thursday before the board member meeting, 8 to 10, and then we have Tues, Mondays, 2 to 4, Tuesdays, 2 to 4. Scratch out my old notes. Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Is it on Tuesdays, is finance first and then operations? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Just more to clarify, districts usually either do meeting of the whole, or they do admin committees. On an admin committee, it wouldn't be posted, so it's not public, and you couldn't have but three members, so you would have to choose who those people are attending, because you couldn't have a quorum. Because we go through meeting of the whole, they are posted, they are public, and it doesn't matter who shows up, because they're already following public meetings, so. And then for the calendar next, last year, we brought a couple of different formats. One was to make them committee of the whole, but in a board meeting structure, so one Wednesday would be committee work, and you'd go from like 6 to 9, or 5 to 8, or something, the second meeting would be like our normal meeting. There wasn't a lot of interest in that, and then the other two were just where the Wednesdays fell. So we only created one mock-up this year, just because there wasn't a lot of interest in change last year. However, this just Sue's gone through, and she's taken, like, the days we have the Genesee superintendents retreats, so that we're not having a board meeting, the MASAA conferences, so that we're not, nobody's missing things, MASB, things like that. So she's kind of scheduled them in there on 4th Wednesday or 3rd Wednesday, depending on what was happening. I know, like, in February, there was a holiday, so it couldn't fall consistently, but for the most part, they're on a 4th. If there's two board meetings, which there are in January, June, and August, it would fall 2nd and 4th. Otherwise, it's just a matter of availability. So those are open for discussion. If there's a certain one that you already know, you're out of town, it's possible that we could just switch them before we vote, so that we're not mocking it up all year, but either way, we have the ability to change during the year and post ahead of time. But if we could get it as close to 95% tonight, and get it posted on the website, that would be great. So that is a mock calendar. We know that that doesn't interfere with any of our outside obligations, but I just open it up for you for what you think, and if there's any obligations that you need to make Sue and I aware of, so we can switch it before we vote.
Hey, so I do have one request. July 23rd, if we could move that to the Monday of that week? I have a conference that I have to attend, and it happens to have been moved to that week. So if there's no objection to that-
To the 21st?
21st, sorry.
The regular board meeting?
Right.
Would we need to change operations? Or just run them that same day?
Do we have a meeting before?
Oh, that's right. No, but they would be Tuesday, it'd be the day after the meeting.
But do they happen the week before?
The Thursday before.
Ours are the Thursday before, theirs is the Tuesday before, right? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pointing that out, right, instead of being the day after. I don't mind changing the board meeting.
Generally, if there's ever a conflict, Sue and I will just re-change the schedule and send it out to you for subcommittees and repost it. So for example, there have been times, multiple times, where we've ran all four subcommittees on the same day, back to back to back, if there's like a four-day weekend, or nobody's in session. So the, the subcommittees are a lot easier to change, but people do check the calendar, especially for the regular board meetings.
Right, if we just knew it upfront. Same thing with September 18th. We would have our board meeting, and it looks like you would be gone, or we would have our palace subcommittee meeting, sorry, on September 18th, that Thursday. Would we want to change that?
Yeah, we can, so if we just go with the idea that we're always going to do the Thursday before, she'll just throw it in the calendar.
But that, that's gone, September 18th, it's crossed off. Oh, you don't have the calendar, we have, Carrie, show him the calendar. He's gone, oh, sorry. MASAA?
Well, I see what you-
I'm just saying, and if we're, if we know right now to have a clean calendar, just, that would be a conflict you wouldn't be here for. I mean, we could still run the meeting without you, I guess.
Right, right. That would be something I'd just make Jim do.
Okay. It's just you that's gone, then.
Smile and nod down there, Jim.
That's fine. That was the only conflict I seen.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I don't, can we move it up any, folks, you maybe have to last week?
Why?
I'll be freezing.
Right now, it's on the 30th?
Yeah. Move it- Move it up one week?
Is that...
It's the thirtieth. Are you due that week? Okay. Right. It's a crapshoot. Listen.
So right now, I have two changes, July twenty-third to July twenty-first, and April thirtieth to April twenty-third. Are there any other...
I mean, if you, oh, never mind.
Known conflicts?
I mean, if we kept it the thirtieth on April, I was thinking, if you went early, you'd just bring the baby to the meeting, but...
I think that's a little early in the process.
Yeah, it might be a little bit early. Maybe the next time, maybe the next time. I think that's good.
So I will just say that we do have graduation on May twenty-seventh, which is a Tuesday right after Memorial Day. And, yes, and the backup day, I do believe, is the twenty-eighth.
Good call, Carrie.
It's also the overnight, the twenty-seventh would be the overnight project graduation. And for some people, they may have seniors who are graduating, and they might want to attend that, but...
Are you kidding me right now?
But I, I think it's our backup day...
Yes, our backup day for graduation.
Is, is the twenty-eighth. I just noticed that, too, as you were saying that.
So May twenty-eighth to May twenty-first?
Yep. Does that work for everybody, as you know right now, as if...
Yeah, I know that's a great catch because we, of course, have to be at graduation before a board meeting. Pretty much the whole reason we're here.
Yes.
Sue, I got July twenty-first, April twenty-third, and May twenty-first.
That's what I have also.
All right. Looks good. Any other comments or questions on that? We will have an opportunity to approve in a minute. All right. Moving on, our board action items. We have the approval of the said 2025 board meeting calendar. I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved. Andrea, you have support?
Support.
Was that... Alyssa? You're going to sound alike down there. All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Malky?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next on our agenda, we have the Genesee County Association of School Board Members Liaison and Alternate Approval. Go ahead.
So Jessica was our longtime Genesee County liaison. She went to the monthly subcommittee meetings at the county, and then they tried to do three events per year where they do invite every board member. One of those is the December Frankenmuth Dinner last year. One was, I think they had the lawyer in. I know that this year, they're going to do youth violence in the county, I think in April. But they do have a regular monthly meeting already coming up on January sixteenth. So we do need someone to take over that spot and then an alternate. So basically, this job is you would represent the Schwartz Creek Board of Education. You would meet with the twenty-one other representatives from the county, so Flushing, Kersley, Carmichael, Black, Davison, Bendel Bentley, on and on. And then I think there are members of the GISC board, as well as a couple of superintendents who chair the committee. And you work on projects that are interconnected throughout the county, things that affect multiple school districts. And it's, it's a lot of building relationships and getting to know other districts as well. But they do have that committee work, and Jessica was great. She got pretty highly involved. I, I think it was two years ago she got, we were the ones that sponsored the music at the dinner up in Frankenmuth. And this year was, you heard Kersley's. So it's, it's always good to have someone who can represent us to the rest of the county.
I guess meeting is once a month?
Once a month.
Usually on a Thursday night?
Yes.
Might be able to be the alternate, but not the head of that.
I heard Kim and Autumn.
That's what I heard.
All right. Okay, so with that, I have heard a nomination for, self-nomination for Kim. I'll remind you that later, Kim, that you nominated yourself, and thank you, to represent us on the Genesee County Association of School Board Members. And Autumn, you have generously agreed to be the backup. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. And so with that, I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved. Andrea?
Support.
And that was Alyssa. All right. Any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Communities, that doesn't even have our whole thing, and their Schwartz Creek Board of Education approves Kim Winter as our liaison representative to the Genesee County Area School Board Member Association as presented. Yeah, can you do a roll call, Sue, please?
Sure can.
The way you have this broken up, I'm so sorry.
My fault.
I'm trying to absorb here. Thank you.
Chuck Malky?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, Kim, for that. Next, be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Board of Education approves Autumn Henry as our alternate representative to the Genesee County Area School Board of Member Association as presented. Sue, can you do a roll call, please?
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Chuck Malky?
Yes.
Andrea Fick?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Autumn. All right. And I should mention that this association sponsors scholarships for area students. And we've had many winners of those, that scholarship, where students have the opportunity to apply. And I think there are five hundred or a thousand dollars, I don't remember. But it's an opportunity for some additional visibility for the district and our students to be rewarded for their work. All right. Moving on, we have public comments again. And anyone who would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Okay. All right. Next, we have comments and questions from the board. Anyone? Everybody's just tapped out. All right. I'd like to thank Mr. Rod Heatherton, our superintendent. At our last meeting, we completed an evaluation. And we gave him a rating of effective. Very impressed by all the work that's been done in the last year, and we are grateful to him and to his team. Jim, thank you to you as well, and to all the other folks that support you. It's a pleasure to work with you. I just wanted the community to know. At the end of the meeting, we went into closed session. We came back out in open session, and there was no one here. But we, we voted on that rating. And so thank you again for all that you guys do and for our students with a clear focus on our students. And I think that's why we're all here, to support you and that endeavor. With that, I would entertain a motion. Anybody have any comments or questions anymore? Thank you again, Sophia. Thank you. Thanks, Travis. I always forget you. Thank you, Sue. What would we do without you? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm in a motion since my mic is already in.
Do it.
I motion.
That we are going to adjourn. And Andrea, you wanted to second?
I'll second.
All right. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.